Taxpayer.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the January 3rd, 2018 Town Council Meeting. Welcome to 2018. This is the first meeting of the year. I'd like to call the meeting to order formally and recognize Mayor Protam Dozier for our invocation.
Please bow your heads with me. I'm Heavenly Father. We welcome you to our meeting this evening. We honor your presence. We ask for your help as we -- that you help us guide our discussions. We make decisions that are, in a way that's pleasing to you on behalf of the people that we serve here in Apex. I want to thank you again for those who are serving locally and serving abroad, some in capacities in the military and some not, just finding themselves as their brothers and sisters keepers. Pray these to words in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. As you probably saw on the podium outside the door, there is a stapled copy of our proposed agenda for tonight. I hope you'll go get a copy for yourself. It is dated January 3rd. Looks like this. In that, we have the Order of Events for tonight. As part of that, we have public forum and a few public hearings. In order to speak at any of those, you need to sign the appropriate yellow sheet here up on the ledge where Mr. Hooks is standing. So if you would like to do that, feel free to come up and do that now. There will not be a better time. Once those are collected in about 10 or so minutes, that will be your last opportunity to put your name on the list to speak tonight. With that said, if you intend to speak tonight, please make sure you have one of these yellow guides that were also on the podium. This is the list of guidelines for participating in the public forum and public hearings. So make sure you familiarize yourself with this. Those will include things like the three-minute limitation, how to watch for the green, yellow, red lights, the fact that it is a one-way communication, and we will listen and take notes, et cetera. With that said, I'd like to welcome everybody here and move through. We have no presentations, so we now go to our consent agenda. The consent agenda items are those who are -- which are considered to be non-controversial, and we consider them typically in one swift motion and vote. However, any council member, if they see something they'd like to discuss at a later time in the meeting, can ask for one of those to be removed. So at this time, I'll ask if there are council members who wish to either remove a consent agenda item or if there is a motion to approve all of them at once.
I'll make the motion and then we approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda item. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, consent agenda is passed. We now move to setting the agenda for the night. We have the proposed agenda in the forum in front of us. To my knowledge, looking at the town manager, there's no changes that we are aware of, correct?
Correct.
None recommended? Okay. And so at this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, the agenda is set, and we now enter public forum. Public forum is a time for the public. You get the chance to talk to us about anything that's on your mind. We give you a three-minute window, just so that we're not here all night. We know that the streets are brined, and we hope to get home before the snowflakes fall. With that said, I do have five people who have signed up for public forum, and I will call them in that order. When your name is coming up, please feel free to get up here in a reasonable timeframe. In order, we have Tina Sherman, Stan Thompson, and Seth Sinclair are the first three. Ms. Sherman, you have the floor. And as I will -- no, come on forward. I will ask everybody to stand at the podium where the microphone is, so everybody can hear you. And there's a green, yellow, red light there, so you can keep an eye on those. There you go. Thank you. Very nice.
Thank you. You can hire me.
Ms. Sherman, name an address for us.
Thank you. Tina Sherman, 2251 Toad Hollow Trail here in Apex. And Happy New Year, everybody. It is awesome to be in the new year, and I'm so excited to be standing before you. Right, new year? So excited to be standing before you tonight at your first meeting in the new year with an old business item that is near and dear to my heart: paid parental leave. I know several of you on council, and as you all know, Apex is home. My husband and I bought our first home -- my husband and I bought our first home several years back in 2003 on Village Loop, and our current home on Toad Hollow is our forever home. I have no intention on moving. And I feel strongly about paid parental leave, that it's not just the right thing to do for our town employees, but it's also the right thing to do for our community. I have a story. Several of you have probably heard this story. I'm sure that each one of you have a story, and of when you needed to take leave or when someone you know needed to take leave after the birth or an adoption of a new baby. But this isn't about me, and this isn't about any of you. This is about the town employees. This is not about my story. I want us to focus on the facts. The facts on why paid parental leave is good for the town, good for town employees, good for our economy, and good for taxpayers. I'm going to, again, stick to the facts. According to the Department of Labor, as many as 65% of working mothers aren't eligible or can't afford to take advantage of the FMLA, the Family Medical Leave Act, which provides 12 weeks of unpaid leave. This is why 1 in 4, again, 1 in 4, new moms are back to work within 10 days of giving birth. According to studies from where paid parental leave policies have been implemented, we know that 83% of moms return to work for their employers, reducing training and replacement costs. 90% of businesses show an increase in productivity and employee morale. 87% show no increase in cost. But we live here in the peak of good living, a family-oriented community. So let's focus on the family. When paid leave is offered, moms are able to have ample time to bond with their baby. We see an increase in father involvement in the child's direct care in nine months after birth, a more equitable division of parental responsibilities, and greater comfort and confidence amongst fathers in their co-parenting skills. Breastfeeding initiation increases which has numerous health benefits for baby and for mom, as well as the likelihood of childhood checks and childhood immunization rates.
Ms. Sherman, I apologize, but the lights aren't working, so I just got notice from our backup timekeeper. There's 30 seconds left.
Oh, my goodness. You're going to give me a little leeway, since I didn't have anything, right?
You already have it. You actually already have it.
Okay. You're going to give me a little bit more leeway, since I had no idea that I was coming up. I will wrap up, but you've got to give me a little bit of leeway there. I'm going to skip over a little bit of the research and just talk a little bit about that expanding paid leave is likely to have economy-wide benefits, such as reduced government spending, which I know we all care about, on public assistance and increased labor participation, which would bring economic gains, generating a larger tax base, and increased consumer spending. These are all the reasons why 13 municipalities across this state, including Wake County, Morrisville, Cary, and Roseville -- nothing against Roseville, but Roseville -- have -- are offering parental leave to their employees, including North Carolina employers based here in Apex and regionally, Duke Energy, Cisco, Red Hat, SaaS, Wells Fargo, and EMC. They have all implemented paid parental leave policies. From the police officer who recently spoke to my oldest son about the importance of making good choices, to the maintenance employee who repaired the fence on Kelly Road Park earlier this summer where my toddler plays, to the customer associate who processed my utility payment this afternoon a little late. Paid parental leave is not a fringe or luxury benefit. When our surrounding communities have implemented similar policies, when the data is overwhelming, overwhelmingly clear, there is no need to take baby steps. The time has come for Apex as civil servants to have access to paid parental leave. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Mr. Thompson, and then Seth Sinclair, and then David Hooks.
My name is Stan Thompson. I live at 30, 33 White Cloud Circle. Many people bought their homes in Apex because Apex is a nice, peaceful, quiet community. It's a place where we can rest on our own homes, which is very important. The current town ordinance is, I believe, is balanced for those who want to have recreation, play, and work during the day, and for those people who want peace and quiet in the evenings. One incorporated property here has already installed some lights that are far beyond the town ordinance. They've already applied for variance, and variance was denied. However, I believe they might approach town council and try to amend the laws. That's why I'm here today. 10-foot candles is current law for recreational lighting, and as an example, the town has a park out of Kelly Park. People play tennis there at night. I think that's sufficient proof that 10-foot candles are adequate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thompson. Seth Sinclair, and then David Hooks will follow.
Hello. I'm Seth Sinclair at 312 Grassy Point Road here in Apex. I'm a resident of the Hollins Crossing subdivision. We have a little over 330 homes, and I know I've spoke to many of you already, but I'm petitioning for us to get greenway access on this next phase of the greenway expansion, bringing the greenway out to Kelly -- or out to the Apex Nature Park. Currently, residents of our neighborhood either have to drive to the nature park or they have to cross what I call the death bridge. It's not a joke. And I propose that there's a nice little strip of town land there that would provide us easy access. It's only about 100 yards. It would keep residents from our neighborhood who attend all of Chapel Hill and Mentry from having to cross Apex Barbecue Road and Kelly Road. If they wish to walk or bike to school, it would allow my friend's 12-year-old son to stop having to cross the Apex Barbecue Bridge to get to the nature park and play basketball. I think this is just a no-brainer to give access for 330 homes to the newly expanded greenway, as well as the Velagio neighborhood next to us, which has a sidewalk connecting down to Kinship Lane where I propose the connection should be. I don't believe a sidewalk on the new bridge that is proposed from NCDOT is safe enough for children to cross to the Apex Nature Park by themselves. I believe that a dedicated multi-use path is the right way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sinclair. Mr. Hooks, and then Stephen Fizzler will be after that.
Good evening. David Hooks, 1020 North Wellensburg Place in Apex. Not had the opportunity publicly to congratulate Mr. Gant, Ms. Dozier, and Ms. Killingsworth on your victory in the election, and I look forward to how you lead us in the next few years. Look forward to good things. First, about paid parental leave, just a couple of comments. I just hope that we're not going too quickly on this. I know a lot of the other municipalities are doing this, and I don't think we're having problems in Apex with recruitment. In October, town staff provided me with information that for every position that was filled to that point, we had an average of 66 applicants. That's excellent for recruitment. As far as retention, I don't know if we have that information yet, because it's so new to the other municipalities. So that's the only thing that I would have to say about that part of it. As far as how it affects competition with Duke Energy, the company I work for also installs overhead power, and there is an arms race right now for good qualified help. I do know that Duke Energy is paying $10 to $12 an hour more than the top pay for town Apex, and one of the problems is how quickly it takes to get to the top pay. So Personnel Committee may want to take a look at that as far as trying to retain those employees. (cough) And back to another topic. Mr. Mayor, I want to go back to public forum. I think this is a great opportunity for people to speak. I know we don't want to run into y'all's time, because I appreciate the long hours that you put in. But again, back in October, I went through all the minutes. There were 46 people that spoke during that whole period of time. It equates to about 10 minutes worth of time each meeting, so to have public forum at every meeting and not just the first one in the month, I think will be beneficial. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hooks. And Stephen Fizzler.
Quiet.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Having reached the end of the public forum, I'll declare the public forum closed. Thank you very much. I think all the council members heard everything there. On the greenway comments, I think the town managers certainly made note of that, and if the individual wishes to follow up with staff, I think they may be able to help identify that on a map and look at that from the planning perspective as well. So now we move into a time of public hearings, and we now move to public hearing number one. This is a question of annexation. Annexation number 603 of approximately six acres, and Diane Ken is presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let me get to my map here. This sounds a little better. Just to orient you to the location, this is -- sorry, it's Green Level Church Road, and it is up in the White Oak Creek Basin area. This property is owned by Mary and Howard Holt. It is just over six acres. They are requesting annexation in order to get public water, and staff does recommend approval.
Great. Any questions for Diane or staff in general?
When we have a law for annexation for water, are there any restrictions just that they subdivide the property? Once we've annexed a property, we're kind of committed to move forward with subdivisions and stuff like that, because they're paying taxes. We don't have any--
This property is in the ETJ, and it is zoned rural residential. They're allowed by right one unit per acre, and that's regardless of whether they annex or not. They do have to annex to get public water and sewer.
Okay. I'm just curious about that. We annexed a number of properties just to provide that, and I absolutely think we should do that here, too, because there is continual problems out that way with water. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I had a follow-up. When the annexation is near a neighborhood versus like out in the middle of nowhere, is there a difference in the cost of bringing the water and services to them?
Well, the property owner pays all those costs, so they're -- they typically do not annex for public utilities unless they are able to afford it. So it's more likely closer to other projects. You can see there are projects being built all around this property, which no doubt has made it more economical for them to annex at this time.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing, and seeing no one has signed up for this, I will close the public hearing and refer the matter back to council for motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on the motion? I'll call for the vote, then. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move to public hearing number two, which is also an annexation. This is number 614 of approximately eight acres. Diane.
All right. So this property is located at Center Street, near Shiflin Road. It is a project that was previously approved, both the rezoning and subdivision. It's called Center Street Station. So it's located right there in the middle of town. It's -- it needs to be annexed in order for them to get their construction plan signed, in order to get public water and sewer. Staff does recommend approval of this annexation.
All right. Questions for staff?
I do have a question. I remember, Mayor, you had brought up those two green, long, rectangle pieces.
Yes, sir.
Did we get that worked out to where they would not be kind of landlocked?
Yes. The town council changed the transportation plan to have a connection to those two properties, so that they will not have to connect to Center Street if they choose to rezone and develop in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move to public hearing number three. Public hearing number three is also an annexation request for number 621, which is less than one acre near the Peakway, and Diane Ken is presenting.
All right. So this is Norris Salem Street. This is the Apex Peakway. This property is requesting annexation in order to move the historic house owned by Staley Smith that's up on US 64 currently, to move it to this location, and they do need annexation in order to get water and public water and sewer to the house. Staff recommends approval of the annexation.
All right. Thank you. Questions for the staff?
Can I -- help me understand, when it's a historic house versus a normal property, are there any differences in the procedure?
For the annexation?
Yeah.
No, there's not.
Okay.
No.
I think the distinction here is there's currently not a house, but there wishes to be one that's not a construction, but rather a relocation.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
Where's the house that is being moved?
It's on US 64. It's on the Crossroads Ford property, and in order to -- it's a historic house, so in order to move it, they have to find a suitable location. They have to do a historic preservation easement, which they're working with Capitol Area Preservation on that, so it's all positive. We'd like for it to be able to go here.
Where's the house? I'm trying to think. When I see that property, I remember the building, the commercial business that was there. Where's the house?
It's a brick house.
Oh, okay. Up Salem Street, a little farther. Okay. I know who you're talking about.
All right. Okay. Shall I open the public hearing, then? Y'all ready for that? All right. Public hearing, open, and no one signed up, so it is now closed. And we now refer the matter to council for motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to approve? All right. I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, that passes unanimously. And now that brings us to public hearing number four. Public hearing number four is a quasi-judicial public hearing, so we have a couple of things we have to do in order to be legal, so bear with us while we get this all set up. So in a quasi-judicial public hearing, the town council normally functions in a legislative capacity. This means that we act as essentially a multi-person judge. So we have presentation in the form that is similar to a court case, so that's why it'll look like that when you see it. The burden is upon the applicant for the special use permit to put on enough evidence to show that they meet all of the criteria found in the town's Unified Development Code. Anyone who opposes the application must put on a similar kind of evidence using criteria and showing that those criteria have not been met. Testimony must be given under oath. All testimony and evidence provided to the council must be competent, must be material, and must be substantial. Pursuant to the North Carolina General Statutes, competent evidence does not include opinion testimony of lay witnesses on certain matters, and hearsay evidence will not be admitted. The parties have the right to cross-examine witnesses to present rebuttal evidence, and the town council will apply the criteria contained in the UDO and make its decision based on the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing. At this time, the town council will take up the special use permit number 17 SUP 04 for the Apex Mosque located at 733 Center Street. At this time, I'd like to make sure that each of the council members has their checklist. Can you find that in front of you? Make sure you've identified the special use permit checklist. Once you have done so, I'd like to request that you go through it as we hear everything and make your notes along the way, so that when we reach the end, we can simply ask if there are any comments, rather than read the entire sheet. At this time, I'd like to formally open the public hearing, which is step number one in about 25 steps, maybe 18. The town clerk at this time will swear in all the persons who wish to testify, so if you're intending to testify, please come forward. And while they're coming up, just want to ask the town council members if they have any questions about the checklist. We can discuss that while they're doing this. And then shortly, we'll ask about site visitations, et cetera. Thank you, everyone. Would the applicant please identify themselves? Who is the applicant?
Yes, sir. I'm here representing the applicant, Jim Eaton, from Lynch &amp; Eaton in Raleigh. I'm here with Jerry Eaton, partner with the firm of Lynch &amp; Eaton, and we have Zinedine Gualla from the Apex Mosque here as well.
All right. Very nice. Thank you very much. And is there anyone else that you intend to bring up as a testimony or a witness?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Is there an opponent who has standing who wishes to oppose this tonight? All right. Not seeing any. That makes things much, much smoother for us tonight. So at this time, I'll ask each council member to describe any communications that they have made regarding this case now that it's here. So that's the first part. Have you had any communications? Second, do you have any relational or financial conflicts with this case? And third, if you'll be able to decide this case impartially and solely based on the evidence presented at this hearing. Councilman Jensen is experienced with quasi-judicial hearings, so I'll start with him, so he can set the stage for us.
Okay. I have no conflicts, and I can make a reasonable decision on this case.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Gant?
I've had no communication, no conflicts. I can make a reasonable decision.
Mayor Protam?
I've been on site recently as an invited guest, but had no communication related to this application, no conflict, and can be unbiased and impartial.
All right. Thank you. I, as well, have had no communications. I have no conflicts, and if I need to, I can participate impartially.
I have had no communications, no site visits, and I can make an impartial decision.
All right. Thank you.
I was also an invited guest, but I have had no communications and have no conflicts and can make an impartial decision.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman. Have any council members gone to view the site as a result of knowing that this application has been filed? If so, indicate now. Have you viewed the site as a result of this being filed? No one? Okay. All right. At this time, I'd like to ask staff if they have an opening statement to make for this case. Okay, no opening statement for staff. The applicant, feel free to make an opening statement at this time.
I do not have one.
All right. Thank you. And no opponents. So at this time, I'd like to ask staff to present evidence for this case. And just as a reminder, there will be cross-examinations, so don't run away too fast. And please identify yourself and your qualifications as we need to.
Yes. I'm Liz Lofton. I'm a town planner here. I'm an AICP certified planner and have been a planner for five years. So this is a special use permit, 17 SUP 04. To orient you to the site, the Apex Mosque is located on the northwestern corner of Center Street and Apex Peakway intersection. Old Mill Village is to the north, and Center Heights subdivision is to the west. The original site plan was called Flea Market and Convenience Store and was approved by the Board of Commissioners on January 15, 2002. The Flea Market used discontinued in 2002, and the site was rezoned as part of the Old Mill Village pud in 2004. The Apex Mosque received a certificate of zoning compliance in February 2009. The property is shown on the 2030 Land Use Map. It's high-density residential, office employment, and commercial The applicant is requesting permission for an accessory preschool to offer early childhood education to children between the ages of three and five, prior to the commencement of compulsory education. Per UDO Section 4.42, churches shall not include daycare facilities, preschools, schools, or homeless shelters unless they are approved as a special use permit. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on July 25, and a copy of the neighborhood meeting report is included-- meeting report is included in the staff report. The proposed hours of operation for the preschool are Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:00 p.m. The applicant expects 30 students initially, and are requesting a maximum of 60 students attend the preschool. There are no proposed or required changes to the RCA, buffers, public utilities, stormwater, landscaping, or lighting plans. Section 8.3 of the UDO requires a daycare or preschool to provide one parking space per six-person capacity. With a maximum of 60 children attending the preschool, 10 parking spaces are required. There are 125 parking spaces provided on-site. The site will be accessed by a full movement entrance off Center Street and a right-in, right-out entrance off Apex Peakway. The proposed preschool plans to use the following rooms inside of the mosque. In planning, staff can recommend it, given the size of the preschool with a maximum of 60 students and the proposed hours of operation. The proposed preschool shall have a minimal impact on the neighboring properties. The special use permit shall only be granted to the preschool, and no other school is allowed under this permit. The preschool will have a maximum of 60 students, and any additional students added would require a new special use permit. So I'm here to answer.
All right, let me see if the council members have any cross-examination questions for Ms. Lofton's presentation. Okay, all right, thank you. At this time, I'll ask the applicant, do you have any cross-examination questions for what was presented?
I do not.
All right. With that, I'll now turn to the applicant to make his presentation of evidence.
Good evening. I think Ms. Lofton accurately described our application, so I would just like to clarify a few things in regards to the site. It's a 3.23 acre parcel. Three buildings are located on the parcel, all of which are owned by the mosque. The mosque and the proposed preschool would be in a single primary building. This building includes an area for worship, multipurpose room capable of serving as a large auditorium or gymnasium, full-size kitchen and cafeteria, and multiple classrooms and offices, as Ms. Lofton showed. There's also an outdoor area secured by fence and surrounded by natural buffers where kids could have limited outdoor playtime. Having touched on the site a little bit, I'd like to go ahead and just briefly address the six requirements of the UDO for approval of a special use permit. The first standard being compatibility, in particular that the proposed special use should be appropriate for its proposed location, and that it must be compatible with the character of the surrounding land uses. In regard to being appropriate for the proposed location, as was mentioned in the staff report, this proposed use is permitted in this location with a special use permit under Section 4 of the UDO. Secondly, as a practical matter, the building housing the mosque, as was shown, easily will accommodate this preschool. I have here Exhibit A, which I've given to Ms. Hosh, if you would please distribute that. And I can also put on the projector if the town so desires.
If we have, I think it would be fine if you can easily recall it, yeah, if you can easily put it up.
Um.
Do you mean the overhead there?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we would need it.
Okay. There should be plenty of copies there.
Yeah, this looks fine, thank you.
And it's something you have seen before. Just as, for your reference, you'll note that Point A is the point of entrance and exit for the preschool, the main point of entrance and exit. Obviously, there are other exits and entrances. Point B shows the five classrooms, and Point C shows the row of offices. Point D is the gymnasium, and Point E is the cafeteria. And you'll note that there's no permanent dividing wall between these two, so there are plenty of room, well, there's plenty of room for the preschool as proposed. You'll note that there are five classrooms. If the preschool did have the maximum of 60 students, that would be 12 per classroom. As we noted, it's expected to have 30 students, meaning there would be only six per classroom. So in short, this exhibit, we believe indicates that the building is more than capable of housing the preschool. Moving on, in regards to being compatible with the character of surrounding land uses, Ms. Hosh, if you could pass Exhibit B. Oh, they have them all. Okay, thank you, great. Exhibit B, you can see the surrounding land uses. Three of the surround, on three sides of the mosque, the land uses are residential. Residential land uses next to a place of worship and/or a school is not only common, but it's desirable. Even still, there is a buffer of trees and vegetation or fence between these residential uses. The fourth side is next to a small convenience store and service station, neither of which are currently open for business. Both are small, one-story buildings, light commercial uses that match the character of the mosque aesthetically, and if anything, they increase convenience to the people attending the mosque and the school without turning the area into a commercial hub. And for these reasons, we believe our clients have met the standard of compatibility. Moving on to the second requirement for a special use permit, the proposed use shall comply with Section 4.4 of the UDO, known as the Supplemental Zoning District Standards. Section 4.4 of the UDO addresses places of worship in two sections, the first of which only applies to places of worship in the B2 Downtown Business District. The Apex Mosque is not in that district, and so this would not apply here. The second section simply states that places of worship must obtain a special use permit to operate a preschool in this district, and obviously, that's why we're here today, to obtain the special use permit. Moving on to the third requirement for a special use permit, the design must avoid significant adverse impacts, avoid being a nuisance, and minimize any adverse impact. We believe that generally there are no adverse impacts associated with this project, since all we're requesting here is a slight increase in the number of people who will be inside the mosque during a time when it is generally otherwise unoccupied. Having that, we still want to address some potential concerns, first of which would be the parking in the carpool line to be used for the preschool. If you'll take a look, please, at Exhibit C, the aerial view of the mosque, you'll note that all areas shown within the black border are open for mosque parking. As was stated earlier in the staff report, there are 125 parking spots. This is sufficient for several reasons, first of which, a preschool does not require much parking. These are children being dropped off and picked up. No one is driving there and staying there and parking, and obviously, they're not driving themselves. The drop-off times and the pickup times do not coincide with prayer times held at the mosque, so there'll be no overlap between vehicles there for worship services and vehicles there for preschool drop-off and pickup. And the preschool is closed on Saturdays and Sundays, so there'll be no issue with weekend visitors. And then, the carpool line, if you'll move on to Exhibit D, you will notice a clearly marked path on that exhibit showing the line that the cars will travel to drop the students off. The students will be dropped off at the entrance, teachers will escort them into the classrooms, and the cars will move in and out quickly, as I said, no parking. So for those reasons, we think the design of the parking has avoided significant adverse impacts. And in regards to any other adverse impacts or nuisances, noise, I mean, there will be no audible noise emanating from the building. There is a small outdoor area for the children to use, as I mentioned earlier. However, it's buffered by fence, trees, other vegetation. Students are only, would only be outside twice a week for a maximum of 30 minutes. The no weekends, never all the children at once, it would obviously be weather-dependent, and they'd only be outside midday. So we believe that has greatly minimized any impact to the extent there actually is one. Aesthetically, there would be no impact here. There's no construction, no change in appearance. So again, we believe there are really no adverse impacts here, and that we've met the third standard for approval of a special use permit. Moving on to the fourth standard, which requires that the design minimizes environmental impact. Obviously, there's no construction here, there's no removal of vegetation, redirecting of stormwater, no other type of environmental impact. The only thing that's changing here is essentially the number of children present during the week. So we believe we've met that standard with no environmental impact. The fifth standard requires that the proposed use shall not have a significant adverse impact on public facilities and services. We believe here that any impact on public facilities and services will be nominal. There are already public utilities serving the mosque. They will, having a few additional children in the mosque, will not burden those services. It would be a very slight increase. There will be no increase, or no significant increase in the amount of water consumed or disposed of. There will be no required changes in the utility service, and there are already, obviously, first responders that serve this property, and having additional people there would not burden that service. So we believe we've met the fifth standard as well. The sixth and final standard requires that the proposed use comply with all standards imposed on it by all other applicable provisions of the ordinance for use, layout, and general development characteristics. We believe this conforms, our application conforms with the UDO. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Again, there's no development, construction, change to layout here, and all of these standards, we believe that all the standards of the Apex UDO which apply to this use have been addressed this evening in this presentation. If the town council has any questions about a provision that has not been addressed here and was not touched on in this presentation, please feel free to ask. So just, if I could briefly conclude, we do believe that we've met all procedural and technical requirements for approval of this application. We've presented competent, substantial, material evidence which meets the necessary burden of proof for issuance of this permit, and we respectfully request that the town council approve this special use permit application on behalf of the Apex Mosque. And we're happy to answer any further questions the council may have, and otherwise, that will conclude our application, our presentation.
All right, so just to be clear, at this point, you're not intending to call a witness for any expert?
Uh, no.
It's not necessary, I just wanted to be clear.
Yes, we had Ms. Gouala sworn in, in the event that the council wanted more detail about the mosque and the application. And also, she helped prepare the exhibits and evidence that was presented tonight. So, you know, we want to have her available in case you all had questions of her.
If it's all right, let me do this. Let me request that you go ahead and introduce her and let her state her name, and then that kind of opens it up, and then we can cross-examine, and that way, she's already up here.
Absolutely.
All right.
Come up and state your name.
And I guess your role in this.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Zainab Gouala. I am the director of Almonara Preschool in Apex Mosque. I believe that Mr. Eatonman has mentioned everything and has told you everything, so the only statement I have to say is that by approving this permit, the special use permit for us, for our preschool, that's going to be, that's going to help us provide a huge need for preschool service in the area. Like, in my office, every time, I receive parents who are requesting the expansion of hours of operation. And because we have, like, once we get the permit, we're going to move and go ahead to the, to finish the process of full-time projects of our preschool. So once we get that permit, we're going to provide that need, a huge need for the growing community in Apex suburban area.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gouala. So let me at this time ask council if there are any cross-examination questions on the evidence presented by the applicant or Ms. Gouala.
I was wondering, at the risk of sounding a little ignorant, the, about the times when the prayers occur and which days of the week when the majority of people are in the, for the regular services, when they're in the building?
Yes, the major, like, congregation prayer is done only once a week, it's done on Friday, and by, like, once we get the permit, the hours are going to overlap, as Mr. Eatonman said earlier, so we're not going to have this issue at all. Other than that, the other days, like, very few people attend the mosque and perform the prayer, very few, very limited number of people.
Anything else from council?
One more, and you mentioned the play area, the small play, that's on the southeast corner of the building? Is that right?
Uh, let's see.
See, like, a little...
If you want, you can use the mouse there and sort of point at the screen, or...
Yes, that would be, it is a small triangle right here.
Okay.
Right there, and it is fenced in, and you can see there's a significant buffer between the residential property, and you'll also note that it actually borders a residential pool, which is an area where there'd be noise and people out anyways.
Okay.
So it is pretty protected back there.
Thank you.
Anything else from council?
Just one quick follow-up question. You start at 9:00. I don't recall when you release the children.
It starts at 8:30 a.m.
8:30?
Yes, sir, and releases at 4:00 p.m.
Okay. So that'll basically miss the major traffic. Okay.
All right. Not hearing anything else? All right, thank you very much for the presentation of evidence. As there are no opponents, we get to skip step nine. At this time, I'll ask staff if there is any non-repetitive rebuttal. All right, not hearing any. I'll assume that there's no rebuttal from the applicant, since there's no opposition. So we now get to ask for closing arguments. Are there any? All right, do you have any closing arguments, sir?
I do not.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll ask council just to take a look at their checklist. Hopefully, by now, you've had a chance to look through that. If you have any remaining questions whatsoever of anyone who's spoken, now's the chance to ask them. Once I close public hearing, we will only be able to discuss amongst ourselves. Is there any outstanding question that didn't get asked?
I do have one. This was a preschool, correct? Is this pre-K age?
Yes, yes, sir. Ages 3 to 5 before the start of compulsory education.
8:30 to 4. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right. Without objection from the council, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, the public hearing is now closed. At this time, I'd like for council to look at their checklist, make a note of anything that they have written that they feel like they would like to make a comment on. Certainly, no comments are required, and if you choose to, feel free to move straight to making a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any conversation or discussion from council members on that? All right, not hearing any. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much for coming. Wish you well with the preschool, and we look forward to your continued participation in our community.
Thanks very much.
That concludes public hearing number four. As we take just a moment to reestablish our place, we now move to public hearing number five. Public hearing number five is a possible motion for a Budget Ordinance Amendment number 17. And when we get to the motion time, I'll be happy to read one that the town attorney has handed to me for the specific wording. So let me know when you're ready for that, and I'll read that, so that you can just simply say, yes, that, I move that. All right, public hearing number five, this is a presentation by Joanna Helms. Come on forward. Our Economic Development Director. This is related to the budget and approval of Capital Project Ordinance Amendment.
Good evening.
Ms. Helms.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Going to do just a brief history and... I'm going to do just a brief history, and then we'll get right to some other information. We've been on this journey now for almost two years, most of us, and the reason we've been pursuing this opportunity is quite simple. We need a site or sites that are available for sale so that we may aggressively pursue the multiple prospective companies that are searching for a location in the greater triangle area, which includes, of course, the town of Apex. These companies represent job creation and capital investment. The job creation is good for our citizens, the capital investment is good for the town, so it's a win-win. We'll look at that in more detail in just a minute, the jobs and investment. As a reminder, the town does have an agreement in place with a private property owner to co-develop a 121.3 acre site located off of Pristine Water Drive. And let me remind you where that is. Here is the site, look in red, outlined here. And just for your bearings, this is the current Pinnacle Park Business Park here. This is 1010 coming up here, Highway 64 here, and then this is 55 here. The terms of the agreement that has been approved were meticulously crafted by the town, the owner, and legal counsel to ensure that all parties understood the responsibilities and the rewards. And now, per North Carolina general statutes, we need to hold this public hearing to consider a budget amendment regarding the economic development budget and the approval of the capital project ordinance for the project, now known as the Cash Corporate Center. So as a quick recap on the agreement, anticipated costs to the town associated with the development of the site and the terms are a ground lease, which is three years initially, with an additional three, three-year terms, the lease payments, a ground lease, with the lease payments being equivalent to the property tax increase from the year before, the option to purchase, which is a $100 fee per year, and the deferred taxes. The town will provide funds if the deferred taxes become due because of a zoning change. And again, all these terms have already been approved via the agreement. Proposed infrastructure expenditures in support of this project include roads and utilities at an estimated cost of $541,000. The improvements will provide a public benefit by increasing the business prospects for the town. In addition, expenditures of $23,000 for professional services, marketing, and other economic development activities associated with this project are anticipated. Proposed funding sources for those are as follows. Funds for the street project, which initially is just an entryway into the site, which we propose to be right here off of Burma Drive and right here off of Production Drive. Those funds will come from interest earnings already deposited in the fund which have not yet been budgeted. Funds for the water and sewer project, which is to ensure that we can get water and sewer to the site, again, per the agreement, will come from a transfer from the Water Sewer Reserve Fund and interest earnings already deposited in the fund which have not yet been budgeted. Funds for the electric improvements, again, ensuring that the town is the electric service provider, will come from amounts previously transferred to the fund for electric projects from the electric fund that were not needed to complete those projects. And then, the town would appropriate fund balance and the general fund to cover the additional $23,000 needed for the aforementioned costs. Now, I just wanted to briefly go back to that statement I made earlier about opportunity, and that can best be demonstrated by a few slides that I'd like to share with you. This slide depicts a two-year period of the year 2016 and 2017. And what you see there are any project requests of 120 acres or less. So we had other projects that requested more than that, but I wanted to show you all the opportunities missed for projects that requested 120 acres or less. So you can see there the number of projects in this column represented. Again, the orange is 2016, the green 2017, and then across the bottom here, you can see the industry sectors: clean energy, distribution warehouse, food processing, headquarters, life sciences, manufacturing, in most cases, advanced manufacturing, and then some miscellaneous. So seventeen opportunities in 2016 and twenty-five in 2017. And again, these projects were looking in the triangle market, but they're looking for a home in the triangle market, and 120-acre sites are very hard to find in this market. Now, this slide depicts the total investment in jobs had, if all those projects were to land in this market, which, of course, we know they're not all going to, but that represents over 2016 and 2017, forty-two projects. Forty-two projects that requested 120 acres or less, that we could have gone to the table and had an opportunity to really fight for that project. So the total investment of all those forty-two projects was just under $4 billion, and the amount of jobs to be created is 11,479. So again, not all of those are going to locate in this market, but at least we could have gone to the table with an opportunity for Apex to be considered for one of those projects, if not more. So if we had landed just one of those projects in the last two years, the average of all those projects represented was an average investment of about $120 million, and the average job creation was 280. So if we had just landed one of those, that's about the average that we probably, if you take an average, could have considered for those forty-two projects. And finally, I just wanted to show you a quick snapshot. This is a quick snapshot of what a real estate sign could look like on the site. We're working on those marketing materials as we speak. But we are very excited about this opportunity, we're very optimistic about the site and the public benefit that we anticipate for the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions from Ms. Helms? All right, not hearing any. Let me move to the public hearings. No one has signed up, so we'll open and close the public hearing, refer the matter back to council. If anyone would like me to word the motion for us, I'll be happy to do so now.
Please.
All right, I'll go ahead and do that. The motion, and this is an appropriation motion, just to be clear, this is a motion to approve the appropriation for the economic development purposes as presented based on the determination that the acquisition of the real property interest and the extension of infrastructure as proposed will increase the business prospects of the town, and to approve budget ordinance amendment number seventeen regarding the economic development budget and approved capital project ordinance amendment number 2018-6 for the Cash Corporate Center project. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to approve?
I am excited about this. This is something that Mr. Jensen and I worked hard for the last two years in the Economic Development Committee. And I'm glad to see us get to this point. I have some opportunities to respond to all those inquiries we get, so I'm excited about this opportunity.
Great, thank you, councilman.
Yeah, this will resolve the problem where Wes and I looked at each other and, along with Joanna, and all the, no answers to so many of these things, it was unbelievably frustrating to see those things go by, and we don't even get a shot at them. So this will resolve that. I think it's, the amount of time that was spent to make this contract, put this contract together, was, made it a good deal for the cash folks and a very good deal for the town. And we've got a shot, and I think it's so critical that we have these jobs in town so people can work close to home. It helps with long-term infrastructure by allowing people to work close to home. And I'll get off my podium right now, and we can move ahead.
All right, very good. We have a motion and a second. If there's any further discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that motion passes unanimously. Go forth and land some employers, best you can, I know, or fill out forms is probably the more correct way to put it. With the closing of public hearing number five there, that concludes our public hearings tonight. We now move to old business. Old business number one is a possible motion for the paid parental leave policy, and presenting that tonight is our mayor pro temp, Nicole Dozier, and she is also the chair of the Personnel Committee.
Thank you. So I'm pleased to be here again to discuss paid parental leave, to enhance the current benefits that we do provide to our great staff in Apex. I'm also pleased to partner with staff doing so, so you will hear from Dr. Green in a moment. I also want to thank people who contacted us, who contacted us via online, who came here tonight, who don't work for the town but believe that the level of service they get is great, and that they want to support the folks here that work on their behalf every day, so I appreciate that as well. So, you know, I could talk about, I could talk about numbers again, we can talk about, you know, a moral reason why, I could talk about being a parent, why, and I think we've heard those reasons, and we had in public forum, we heard some of those as well. So what I just want to say is that this leave is becoming more standardized, and so as people expect certain things when they are looking for work, this is one of the things that people have started asking about. And it's in line with the proposal that Chairman, and Chairman, and Commissioner Holmes championed and was supported by the commission and then by Raleigh as well. And so I think doing what we're doing tonight is looking at this again and hopefully passing something as a way to thank staff in making their benefits more robust in this great town is a great thing to do. So I'd like to bring up Dr. Green to give more facts, and hopefully we get this passed tonight. Maybe we will hear less facts and more stories, success stories. As a storyteller myself, I'd like to hear some of the, you know, stories from people who get to use this leave. Dr. Green?
Well, good evening. I know a number of you were at the Personnel Committee where we discussed this. I don't know how many more facts I have than what's in front of you, which is, right now, who is doing this in our labor market? And when we visited this about a year ago, there were several people talking about it, a few people doing it. Now, there are a lot more people doing it. As you can see on the list, Cary, Morseville, Raleigh, Wake Forest, Wake County, Chapel Hill, Hillsborough, Orange County, City of Durham, Durham County, and I don't even have on the list, but you're correct, Roseville is also doing it. So, and along with the non-municipal employer that I wrote here, because it is a direct competitor, and that's Duke Energy. I think I do want to also address something I heard in public forum. I think it's right, Duke Energy is paying a lot for their folks. I don't see Mr. Hooks here now, but, yes. And we do need to do something with pay, but we also need to make sure that our benefits stay competitive with those around us. And it's getting harder and harder to recruit especially police officers and firefighters, and when our salaries are all about the same, and these folks are often younger coming into the workforce and are looking at jobs, and they're comparing Cary and Raleigh and Apex, and six weeks of paid parental leave is a major decision factor for them. It will be. I mean, we don't have tons of proof right now, most of these places have just implemented paid parental leave, but from my experience, it will be one of those questions that's asked, and that will be a difference maker. So I believe, you know, that, those are really kind of the facts. We think six weeks is reasonable, given that that's mainly what others are doing in the market, and it's a good balance between the organizational challenges that we'll have when people do have paid parental leave plus being competitive with the labor market. I'll answer any questions you have.
All right, is it your wish that we open it up to council this time?
Sure.
All right, so any questions from council members for either Dr. Green or general discussion?
As far as, you know, general comments, I'm a big proponent of paid parental leave, so I think this is, it's great to be competitive with the other municipalities and governmental entities around us, as well as some of the companies that, you know, are big competitors. I would certainly love to see more, and this, I think this is a great, a great way to start with this, and I would love to see, you know, some figures in discussing of this maybe nine months, a year from now, and looking back on this to see how this, if it does pass, how it affects the employees in the town.
I guess, I had, let me say a few things if it's okay, mayor. I started off this meeting in the Personnel Committee in support of discussing this, and I was hoping that we could find some sort of middle ground, some sort of compromise with this. Unfortunately, we weren't able to reach that, so I did not recommend, obviously, approval to leave the committee to bring it here. Of course, the chairwoman can do that if she wishes, but we have, as was stated earlier, sixty-six applicants per position that we had available for hire in Apex. I think that's a pretty telling statement that we are not losing the competitive game in the marketplace. Duke is a bit of an unfair comparison, they're a $2.8 billion net income company, and we're a $100 million tax-collecting entity. You know, the, we have a pension plan, very robust health and dental insurance that carries into retirement, accumulate unlimited amounts of sick time. You don't get those things at Duke, they don't have a pension. It was so unaffordable that they had to stop it and grandfather people in from back in the eighties. They don't offer that anymore. We have tremendous benefits at this town, and I think with the unlimited amounts of carryover sick time, you can have up to thirty days of vacation time, oh, and if you have more vacation than thirty days, it converts into sick time, and you can add it to your sick accumulation. So I don't think we're lean on our benefits by any stretch of the imagination here at the town. I think that I would have liked to see individuals use some sick time, some vacation time, and then we can add on to that for a parental leave benefit. Look, I have four kids, my own, I understand the importance of being home, but I also understand the importance of us getting, people making decisions in their household when they're going to have a baby. You have to plan for it, you have to think about these things, right? I mean, if we increase this from six weeks to twelve weeks, to eighteen weeks, to, who knows, where does this ever stop? You know, next thing you know, we have employees that are out for a year because they had a baby, and now we have to hire, this just gets exponentially more. But if we required some sort of accountability from employees to use sick time, to use some vacation time, then I think we could have protected ourselves a little bit better. And that's what I was hoping we could have reached in the Personnel Committee. Unfortunately, it didn't seem like much ideas were up for discussion, there was one idea of what we wanted to do, and that's what got pushed forward. So I cannot support the proposal as is tonight.
All right, thank you, councilman. Any other comments from council?
Are we in the discussion mode, or?
Well, I mean, if we're, if we don't have any questions for Dr. Green, we'll let her have a seat.
Well, other than to ask you a question that I already know, I guess, paid parental leave has to apply equally to men and women, whereas maternity leave can apply to a woman and not necessarily, and not a man.
That's a legal question, but I think we have determined that's correct, that paid parental leave has to be equal amounts, male, female. We could have a maternity benefit that's different if we wanted to do that.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, I'll speak up. I understand that there's obviously a cost to this with the, either indirect with services that may not be provided, or having to hire someone if the person's out, but I think this issue, I wish it was a national policy in place, and I wish it was a statewide policy in place. And so if I could force the employers in Apex, private employers, I would do that as well. So I'm excited to be able to vote for this. I spent the last four weekends with my sister and her three-month-old nephew, which was great, but I heard a lot about the hardships that she was dealing with without having, she was actually not a year into her job, but without having the access to FMLA, and her company did not have the paid parental leave, and it was a hardship. And so I heard about it over and over again. So I'm excited to be able to provide this benefit to the town employees.
You know, mayor, if I could, I'd like to add another thing. I saw a statistic that I think about fifteen percent of individuals have this benefit from their employer. Let's assume that statistic is true, and let's assume it applies to Apex. I don't think it's right for 100% of our taxpayers to pay for a benefit for our town employees that only 15% of our taxpayers actually are receiving from their employer. I think that's, on another note, how do we, what about... I think that's, on another note, how do we, what about the individuals who are past childbearing years? Now they, now they say, oh, well, my employer or my next-door neighbor in my, in my department has six weeks when they have a baby. What do I get? What do I, how does this benefit me? I just think there's still some work that can be done to tighten this point up.
So I can respond. I think Dr. Green may want to respond to that. And I think some folks know that right after I tabled this, that I did a more robust policy that took into consideration some of the suggestions that the council members at the time provided me. And it was more robust. It was broader and it had implications for more people. And so I came with that and we presented that. We discussed it in our committee. But it was felt as though, this staff felt as though this was something that would, as she said, was more of a standardized benefit. The one that I wrote that was more sweeping was not as standardized and that's something that does need more time. And there are actually pushes at the state level and at the national level to do some of this stuff because obviously I do work with these people every day that do this. It's just not my issue area every day. So I did, I actually did do that and it was, you know, and that's something that could be down the line. But I did do that and it was response to my colleagues at the time and that we got our answers. I don't know if Dr. Green wants to talk about the whole thing with caregiving and FMLA being paid or all these different things we could do that would be more sweeping and affect more people and impact more people. That this was a balance that, you know, I want to respect what staff felt was something that would be morale busting for everyone versus morale busting and boosting, busting for some.
Yeah, we did discuss an option of doing a broader caregiver leave. I think we have a general understanding of how many people might have children. We really don't have a good gauge of how many people might need caregiver leave. There are a lot of other issues related to caregiver leave in terms of how people take it intermittently, you know, a few hours at a time or days or weeks at a time. There's a lot more administration with a caregiver leave. We think it's a great idea and personally it's a great idea. The employees would love that. I believe at this time it needs more discussion and vetting out how an actual policy would work. However, the parental leave people have, it's out there now and I'm afraid that we are going to lose out on employees and applicants if we don't go forward with that. I did just check, I heard the statistic, the 66 applications, and I can't remember where that came from. It must have been some data that we gave in general. But I went downstairs and looked at our last police applicant pool and we had 62 applicants, but of that, only third, only half of those were even, even met the minimum qualifications. So, I mean, that, so 66 might be an average, but we have some jobs that have over 300 and some that have 10. So, you know, just wanted to say that. But the caregiver leave, I mean, I think it's something to come back to, but.
Is that something, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Is that something additional that you think that it sounds like it would be talked about in addition to the parental leave, a caregiver, caregiver leave?
Yes, that's how we had proposed it when we talked about it briefly in the Personnel Committee. It would be leave that anybody who qualified, having a family member who needed the caregiver leave could qualify for that, so yes.
Can employees currently use their sick time for caregiver leave?
They can use their sick time to care for a child or a parent who, yes, who needs care. And for FMLA, there's some qualifying conditions also that you can qualify for FMLA when it's a very specific, serious health condition that a parent might have and you're the primary caregiver.
And the next level beyond that would be, just FMLA would be fully paid. That would be, so that's a whole nother level which covers yourself. And so there's all, there's a variety of levels. This is the lowest level actually, beside zero, which is what they currently have. So, and I will say that I think Orange County, if I'm correct, and then Mecklenburg County are looking at caregiver leave.
Yes, I think it's the town of Chapel Hill.
Chapel Hill, excuse me. Go Hills.
Wake Forest has done, Wake Forest is the only place in that we presented in the Personnel Committee, they've done six weeks of elder care. So they have implemented that. But we just, we just didn't feel like we were ready with a policy at this point.
Any other comments or questions or discussion?
I guess I've got a few comments on this, at this point. Certainly, a lot of the other towns are doing it. I see the list goes on and on for paid parental leave. But just because other towns are doing it isn't the right approach. That's the question. And I personally don't think it is. Paid parental leave, it was noted, applies to men and women equally during the birth cycle. Women and men are different. I have never seen a man who got pregnant and gave birth. I think there's a huge difference there. I think the trauma to the, to the woman's body is substantial and they need a lot more time to heal than a man. I've been through this a couple of times and with two different wives. And I can tell you for sure, in my opinion, at least from what I experienced, my wives needed a whole lot more time off than I did. I can give them help and things like that, but in terms of needing the time off to mend, I think that the woman needs a lot more time. I think the concept of maternity leave, so that it allows us to give women the opportunity to stay at home longer is a better way to go and we can supplement that with paid parental leave, which will allow a man. What I, what I would suggest is that for childbirth, the mom should be given six weeks of maternity leave, supplemented by two weeks if it's a cesarean section. That's kind of what we're in here, in for this. Coupled with that, we could do three weeks of paid parental leave, which would apply equal to the man and the woman. So the man, the man can have three weeks off to take care of the situation, but the mom, the woman who's gone through the birth cycle, who's really carried the big load there, could have then eight to 11 weeks off, depending on whether it's a C-section or not. I think that's a better way to go. I just don't think that this program is ready yet. And from my standpoint, I would limit the maternity opportunity to two cycles. And for the reason that, right now, we are in a population growth situation where we are impacting the world to a substantial amount. We're struggling with climate change, resource depletion, famine, and the largest species extinction since the dinosaurs were wiped out. We have a responsibility as a intelligent species to limit our size, our growth. Furthermore, the United States right now spends almost 25% of its gross domestic product on growth. That comes out to about one day a week per person. If we weren't in this growth cycle, we could actually maybe have a 32-hour week. People would have more time off to be with their kids, a much better thing. The United States right now has to construct almost a million houses per year just to keep up with the growth that took place 25 or 30 years ago to make accommodations for those houses. This impacts forests, it impacts our resources tremendously. I personally think that no government body, no government body should support or should subsidize larger families. And I think that that's what this program does. I think it should go back to committee. I think it should be looked at from not just an Apex side, but from a global side, from the United States side and from the world's side and what impact we as a species are having on the rest of the world. I can't vote for this tonight. I think it needs to go back to committee.
Thank you, Councilman Jensen. This is your issue.
All right, so.
What would you like to do?
I'll make a motion.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to approve paid parental leave and thank everybody for their comments and for their engagement. Some of the stuff that you mentioned, I'm going a little bit aside, but since I didn't, I responded to Mr. Moore, I didn't respond to you. I'm happy to, to send sort of pull, stream things through, you know, different proposals, but as long as the same thing gets streamed through every proposal that comes up. So if we're going to look at Apex and then North Carolina and then if we're going to look at this, we've got to look at it through every proposal. You know, how whatever we do affects us locally all the way to nationally. And I'm fine with doing that, but it has to be everything we do. Everything has to be done kind of equitably. So that's what I would say. I want to make sure I respond to you with that. So motion stands to approve paid parental leave.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the paid parental leave as submitted by staff in the agenda packet. Any discussion on the motion?
Well, I think it's a, I think it is a wrong way to go. I think it is just following a bunch of towns that have done it incorrectly. I think it doesn't take into account the difference between men and women and I think it's one big mistake. That's my opinion on it.
All right, any further discussion on the motion?
I'd like to say that I was in support of discussing this and changing it a little bit to provide this benefit to our employees in a little different fashion than what's provided tonight. I'm not happy with, with what has been pushed through. And I think it's kind of ironic with the timing of how and when it was pushed through. I'm not happy about how it was just kind of singular, one tunnel vision on something that somebody wanted and here we are. So I support this benefit in a different fashion, but I can't support this tonight.
I'm not, I'm not understanding what some of that was about the timing and ironic. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like for Mr. Moore to respond to that question about timing and ironic. If I wanted to push this through, then I would have done it in a different way. I've done it the right way.
One week after, new counsel.
I'm still speaking.
You asked for my answer.
No, I'm still speaking.
It's pretty obvious.
Okay. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
It's pretty obvious.
I'll let you finish your question, but you did.
Right, but I was still speaking though.
But you did call on him, so go ahead and finish your question.
So I'm not sure what you mean by the ironic with timing and all. I don't, I don't get into games and that kind of stuff. I believe in this wholeheartedly and I brought it back to the committee. We discussed it and I was respectful of your comments previously and this time, which is why I went into the caregiver. So I'm not sure about iron, you know, being ironic and timing and not sure what that means. And so I think that I deserve to get what you mean by that, to be open about that.
Thanks, Mayor. I have nothing to add.
Okay.
I think we can all figure it out.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion to approve?
Nothing, uh-uh, we're done.
All right, I'll call for the vote at this time. All in favor of the motion to approve the paid parental leave as submitted, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Absolutely no.
All right. So that passes by a vote of three to two. If I may give myself just a small privilege, I was hoping that it would come out of committee with a compromise and some unanimity so that we wouldn't end up with a split vote in this conversation the way it went. So I'm a little disappointed with that. I, I'd like for the committees to be able to work towards a unanimous presentation. That didn't happen here. Hopefully, going forward, we can find ways to do that and we don't start down a path of having a split council, but at least finding some compromise where we can get at least four people to approve something. Certainly, that's not a requirement, but it certainly does show that we tried to work together to find something that works. With that said, I will move past old business number one. That concludes that one. We move to old business number two, oh, sorry, new business number one, which is possible addition of three days for paid bereavement leave. Again, Mayor Protem, Nicole Dozier.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is another benefit that we talked about to provide to town employees. And from speaking to staff, I was, it was told to us that this is not the first time that this has been brought up to staff. It's something that they like to see. Quite frankly, I think I was sort of surprised that we didn't have bereavement leave. And we were talking about this earlier related to if we did caregiver leave and that had to be exhausted, then someone may pass away that you're caring for and you may not have any other leave that you've taken because you've done this. So bereavement leave would be reserved just for what we know bereavement is for, unfortunately, what we all deal with in life. And we're just proposing the minimum, which is between the three and five days, which other places have done, and asking for three days to provide this benefit that's been brought to us through the Employee Relations Council on apparently more than one occasion. And so, Dr. Green, if you'd like to add anything to that as the expert.
I think you really just summarized what we talked about in the Personnel Committee and why the request is before you. It has been something that the Employee Relations Council, which is a representative group of all our employees, have asked for. It's come out in employee surveys as something that they would like to see. So it's been something that our employees have asked about because it is a benefit that other people have. So when we, when we're also talking about paid parental leave, we were thinking that that is something that just goes to a certain segment of our employees, people who are having babies. Bereavement leave obviously would be a benefit that's provided to all. So, yes, we're here asking that we add that. And you can see the list of employers on your agenda item that currently offer that.
Could I ask Ms. Green a question?
Yes.
Does our current policy allow employees to use sick time or vacation time if they have a death in the family?
They are allowed to use sick leave or vacation if they have a death. That's correct.
So I'm more fully versed in the parental leave timeline, but this one, the three days, is there an idea about that length of time versus more or less?
Well, honestly, I think three days, that started way back. The state has a three-day bereavement leave policy and a lot of counties and cities have followed kind of the three days. I think the thought was oftentimes allowing people time enough to travel and then be at a funeral and then come back. So it's up, it's usually written up to three days, not that it automatically is three days, but.
Who, if it's up to three days, is this up to three days?
We have written.
Or this is automatic three days?
I think we have said.
You said it automatic.
I have to.
I believe it's up to.
Up to, I believe, is the wording.
Okay, who makes the decision to allow that?
Well, if the employee needs the three days, then it's the employee's going to request the three days. So the supervisor, I mean, we don't really want to put our supervisors in a position of having to make a judgment over whether somebody's grief or travel or whatever needs that exact amount of time. So that's why we have up to three days. But I have certainly seen people where it's, it's, three days is allowed and people only take a day. It's a local funeral and that's all they take because many people are committed to work too. They don't necessarily take everything that they have.
See, I believe in bereavement time. There's a difference if it's in-state or out-of-state. I know my son works for Red Lawn and they give three days if it's out-of-state. And I'm not sure that they give any time in-state. We haven't come into that situation. But I guess you're making it subjective up to you or somebody else as to who makes that decision. You know, I could see four days out-of-state and two days in-state or something like that and locked. Because certainly if you go out-of-state, you're traveling, if you're going from here to California, you're traveling a day each way. So that gives two days of being there and having family, so.
And it's not all travel. I mean, some of it obviously is the grief and having, if you've experienced a death, and this is deaths in immediate family, so it's not every, you know, immediate family is father, mother.
And I understand that. I'm just saying though that there, there is logistical situations when you're going out of town. And I, and I, I guess if a person has to go out of town, then they got their three days. If they need more, they have to take vacation.
That's correct.
Or something, is that what the thing is?
That's correct, yes.
I'm not going to pick at it.
My parents live in Asheville and I think it'd be the same drive, four hours to drive to Asheville versus four hours to fly to California.
Well, it's a little longer to fly direct and plus you have to go to the airport and all that sort of stuff. So by the time you're done, plus time zones and stuff like that, I think that it's, it's harder to fly that distance. I'm not going to pick at the details of this. I'm fine with the bereavement, but, but I, you know, but to me, there is, there is details, that's all.
Any other questions for Dr. Green?
I do have a question. I think I just. I think, just to confirm, our town benefit, employees accrue eight hours of sick time per month they work? Is that about right?
That's correct.
Eight hours is considered a day?
Right. If they're like 40 hours a week, they accrue eight hours, eight, yes, eight hours a month.
Eight hours a month is accrued, so one day a month of sick time is accrued for work. Okay.
If there are no other questions for Dr. Green, then we can bring it to council for discussion. All right. Discussion leading to a possible motion?
You asking for discussion first, Mayor?
Either. If there is, if there is no discussion, motion...
Motion to approve bereavement leave of three days for our town staff for immediate family.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Discussion on the motion to approve?
Immediate family is defined as, if you could do that, please.
Yes, it's mother, father, spouse, siblings, children, or any in-law, or relationships by marriage are also part of that, so in-law relationships. Grandparents are also in there.
Or uncles and aunts?
No, uncles, aunts, cousins, they are not immediate family.
All right, if there's no discussion...
I would, I would like to say something, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, with accumulating eight hours or one day of sick time a month, I think there's, you know, although I've experienced death in the family, I think we all probably have at some point, it's a terrible thing. I think, again, with the robust benefits that our town currently has, I can't see adding another additional benefit onto our current package. So I do not support, support this in this fashion.
All right. Is there any other discussion?
Can I have a response? I, I think, the way I see it is, a sick kid is different than a death in the family, and I've always felt some discomfort in, at the same time, being used for both, and so that's why I think this is kind of a nice benefit, is that it's, it's different, it's obviously a very different life event than a sick kid, which is what the, I see the sick leaves being more intended for, not for these kind of purposes.
Well, I can see doing this from the standpoint that deaths don't happen all that often. I'm trying to avoid mine. And so we don't have to plant too big of a money tree out here in the quad to support it. So I can see doing it. Plus, you know, when the trauma of a death, especially somebody close to you, is something that I think that people don't need to worry about taking their sick leave, frankly, and things like that at that time. I just think from a compassion, from a compassionate standpoint, I think it's a good thing, and it's not expensive.
All right. Absent any further discussion, I'll call for the vote, if there's no objection. All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no?
No.
All right, so that motion passes by a vote of four to one. That concludes our new business and also our planned agenda. There being nothing else left on the agenda, if there's no objection from the council, we will adjourn. All right, we are adjourned.